I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the prayer.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robert Holdwood, you please lead us in prayer.
Yes, this is power here. Tell me, Father, we come to you tonight with thankful hearts. We thank you for everyone that's able to attend the meeting tonight. We thank for all these young people that are with us. We just praise you for everyone that's able to make it. Praise you be with our City Commission, City Manager, Assistant City Manager. Father, we just ask you that every order out of my business will be done decently and in order. Father, we just ask you that you just accept our thanks for all that you do for us every day and for living and working in this great area. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 22nd, 2023. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion to the second. Any discussion with none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Item three, petitions and communications from the public and items from the audience. Tonight, we have the presentation of a certificate of recognition to the Gatlinburg-Pittman Junior High School Beta Team. How many of you are here tonight with the Beta Team? This is a certificate of recognition to the Gatlinburg-Pittman Junior High School Beta Club. Whereas Gatlinburg-Pittman Junior High School Junior Beta Club was founded with the opening of the school in 2020 and has been very successful since it began. And the club is comprised of seventh and eighth grade students who maintain an A or B average along with good behavior. Whereas the students who are members of the 2022-23 Junior Beta Club recently are many honors and accolades at the State Beta Convention held in Nashville and the National Beta Convention held in Louisville, Kentucky. Whereas the State Beta Convention, at the State Beta Convention, the club was honored with first place awards in Song Fest, the first place award in campaign skit, and a third place award for group talent. Whereas also, the State Beta Convention, a number of members were honored for their talent and performances, including Emma Allen, who earned a second place in solo singing talent, Lilly Lowe, who earned a second place award in creative writing, Taylor Thomas, who received a third place recognition in mixed media, Colt Barker, who was awarded fourth place in pottery, Daniel Thomas, who received a fifth place honor in seventh grade science. Whereas after a rigorous campaign at the state convention, Gatlinburg-Pittman Junior High Junior Beta Club eighth grade member Cannon Kocandal was elected as the state junior Beta Club president. Whereas at the national Beta Convention, the success has continued where the GP JH Junior Beta Club also honored for first place for their campaign skit in the presidential campaign for Cannon Kocandal. Whereas following his election as the state junior Beta Club president, Cannon Kocandal campaigned for and was elected as the national junior Beta President at the national convention, earning the position after an election involving 12 state presidents and centering his campaign around the four pillars of Beta, which are service, character, achievement, and leadership. Whereas the Gatlinburg-Pittman Junior High Junior Beta Club's success came under the leadership of sponsors Michelle Whaley, Kennedy Branch, Kelsey Kate, whose guidance, love, and devotion to the club and school made for an outstanding convention season for the members. Now therefore, I'm Mike Warner, Mayor of the City of Gatlinburg, Tennessee. On behalf of the City Commission, the City Manager and local citizens do hereby express our congratulations and recognize and commend the Gatlinburg-Pittman Junior High School Beta Club and their sponsors. Let's hear it for them.
I was just glad to see that everybody wasn't going to be speaking. Man, we're going to be here all night.
For you that are remaining. Item four, reports of boards and committees. Item five, city managers.
Yes, sir. Two or three things here. As usual, at the podium, you have a status report on the various capital projects. Got any questions on those? Please let us know. Secondly, as most of you know, this week is Gatlin Burger Week, being sponsored by our CVV, began Sunday and continues through Saturday. Participating restaurants have crafted special burgers for this week, and they can be purchased for $9. So I think that's going pretty well in there, Chad.
It's going incredibly well. Last year, we already had, last year, we had 60 people that participated. This year, we're already in the second day, and we're already at 89.
Good.
So we're going to probably triple what we did last year. So. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're good. You're good. So we also, we want to announce that the Sevier County Emergency Management Agency is coordinating a test of the emergency alert sirens system in Sevier County, which includes the non-sirens in Gatlinburg, and this will be happening on Wednesday, October the 4th. The sirens test is set to occur between noon and 12:30. The test date of October 4th coincides with the nationwide test date of emergency alert and wireless emergency alerts at 2:20 on Wednesday, October the 4th. So you will be seeing public notifications of this, and the purpose of the test is to ensure that the equipment is operational and identify any problems with the system, as well as to educate the public on what to do. Now, we do a test, I think, where are you, Seth?
Yes.
Yeah, there you are. We do a test weekly, anyway, but this is actually the, it'll be rather noisy and going on throughout the county, so we wanted to make everyone aware of that, and we will put out, continue to put out information between now and October 4th as to that. And so, actually, back to Chad Netherland, I am pleased to announce that Gatlinburg was named the best place in the country to visit this fall by USA Today. And I think that just came out literally today.
It just came out, and last day, WAT did a story. Very, very excited about that.
So this is part of USA Today's annual 10 Best Series, and voters ranked Gatlinburg as the best place to visit in the fall based on scenery, weather, as well as seasonal events and activities. So it's a great thing, and appreciate Chad and his team and all their work to get us that kind of recognition. That's all I have.
Thank you, Cindy. Okay, item six, old business. We have one item, A, ordinance number 2602, no ordinance to amend, section 17-103, 17-106, 17-110, 17-111, 17-112, 17-204, and 17-207 of the Gatlinburg Municipal Code, addressing refuse and trash disposal. This is the third and final reading, passed first reading 8/8/2023, and second reading is amended on 8/8/22/2023. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to a person.
Second.
And we've already passed this on two different times, so any other comments or questions or anything? With none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Item seven, new business. A, resolution number 100A, the resolution naming the bridge at the intersection of Roaring Fork Road and Sherman Claybo Road, the Herbert R. Claybo Memorial Bridge in honor of Herbert R. Claybo. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. And with any, no other questions or comments, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. And any of the family members, if you'd like to come up here, please, like the head of the chair. I'll tell a little story about Herb. Back in 99, the first time I ran for City Commission, I went around to all the different families in town. I didn't know where a lot of them lived, but I went up to Herb's house, and he was very hospitable, said, "Come on in, sit down," and we talked for about a half hour. I thought, "This is going really well." And then at the end, he said, "Now, son, you know I can't vote for you because you're not from here." And I thought... We always got a long break. Okay, this is the resolution naming the bridge at the intersection of Roaring Fork Road and Sherman Claybo Road, the Herbert R. Claybo Memorial Bridge in honor of Herbert R. Claybo. I had the big print for the last one, this is the tiny print. Whereas Herbert R. Claybo was born near the intersection of the present-day Roaring Fork Road and Sherman Claybo Road and was a revered pillar in the Roaring Fork community of Gatlinburg, where he lived for the better part of 100 years. Whereas Herb Claybo was born less than 100 yards from this bridge and lived there until the park, until 1914, before moving to the Grotto Falls area. And once it became part of the proposed national park, he moved back to the Roaring Fork community, where he raised a family of five children with his wife, Della. And whereas throughout his life, Herb Claybo was renowned for being a mailman in Gatlinburg for many years, including delivering mail on horseback early in his career. Whereas Herb Claybo was a founding member of the Roaring Fork Baptist Church and did not miss a service for 33 years. I think that's pretty amazing. Whereas Herb Claybo remained dedicated to Gatlinburg in his later years, becoming an active member of the retired citizens of the Smokies, appearing on the Heartland Series, and gave his account of history of the area. He was a featured speaker at Wilderness Wildlife Week. Whereas Herb Claybo lived on Roaring Fork until his 100th birthday, and he was 103 years old when, at the time of his passing. Whereas although his home and farm were destroyed in the 2016 Chimney 2 wildfires, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Gatlinburg, Tennessee acknowledged that Herb Claybo's presence will continue to live in Roaring Fork and Gatlinburg with this bridge named in his honor and will permanently honor his contributions to the community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Gatlinburg, Tennessee, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Gatlinburg, by the adoption of this resolution, hereby names the bridge at the intersection of Roaring Fork Road and Sherman Claybo Road as the Herbert R. Claybo Memorial Bridge. This resolution made and adopted this 19th day of September 2023. This will be put up tomorrow. B, resolution number 1009, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City, delegating the responsibility for approval of certain subdivision plaits to the planning staff of the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second. Can we have a little discussion on this two things?
I'll be glad to. The state law of Tennessee has had the ability for commissions and planning commissions to delegate certain plat approval authority over many years. In 2022, there was a public act passed that allows communities to allow up to 25 lot subdivisions to be approved by staff if they've been approved preliminarily through the Planning Commission. We talked with our Planning Commission about it. They agreed that if we can limit that to five plaits, minor subdivision plaits that don't require any road construction, anything like that, utility-wise, that it makes sense to approve those plaits if they meet all requirements, speeding that process up for those that are typically family-type subdivision plaits that we review that way. So this is an attempt to basically help smaller plat subdivisions be approved more quickly and recorded.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff.
Your vote.
Any other questions, comments? With none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Item C, discussion and consideration of approving a contract for services with Safe Space of East Tennessee. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion to second. Cindy, can we have a discussion on this two?
Yes, sir. This is before you this evening to make a change in the way that this organization receives the money from the city. It has heretofore been based on the number of clients, and they have asked that the city consider doing this. Basically, there is $6,000 that you approved in the budget, and so this would allow us to do what they asked for us to do, which is to give that amount of money. Period, right? Roger?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Give them more assurance of how to budget their funding if we carry through the funds.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? With none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Item D, discussion and consideration of approving a grant contract for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. UROF State operating assistance with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Mass Transit Department. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Can we have a discussion on this two things?
Yes, sir. This is a longstanding grant that we do receive from TDOT, and I think Nick is here with us this evening, our Mass Transit manager. The grant is in the amount of...
It's $414,700 for this.
With a local match.
With a local match of $103,675, making the total amount $518,375. So it's the standard match, and it's 80, it's basically an 80/20 grant. We get 20%, 20% of what they provide. And it is an operating grant, as Cindy said.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? With none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Item E, discussion and consideration of approving a contract with Axon Enterprises Inc. for the tasers and related accessories and training materials for the police department. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to a person.
Second. Motion in a second.
And, oh, sorry. Yes, so this is a five-year agreement with Axon. Basically, exactly what it says in the agenda item on the agenda is what this is. Chief Barrett is here. If you need any further explanation, I know that this is something that the police department needs and pretty excited about.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Chief.
If you notice in there, it supplies a brand-new Taser 10, which is their newest item out for every officer from the captain level down. Provides spares, five-year warranty, all the training, equipment, and cartridges for a five-year period.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions, comments?
This is...
After they get trained, can you show us how it works on Greg Barrett?
No, I will not. I'll be happy to do it.
He's going to be the one pulling the trigger.
Yeah. I get the training too, donut chief.
Kevin Tierney filmed that. Okay, any other questions, comments? With none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Item F, discussion and consideration of approving a single bid to Hometown Trolleys for the purchase of three trolleys. Do I hear a motion?
Motion. Second.
If we have a little discussion on this two things.
Yes, sir. This is before you due to it being a single bid. This is also a TDOT grant. Robert, you want to take it from there since you got that in?
Yeah, it was, I can, this is a, this is something out of a previous budget, as a matter of fact, that just took a while for the contract to make it through, but we have set up an account for this. There's, we have $950,000 available. This is for three trolleys at this price of $309, which makes the total expenditure And this bid is, has been approved by TDOT for us to accept this, if this requires the commission's approval.
Very good. Any other comments or questions?
Are these already built on the way, or how long will it be till they're...
Nick, they go up in the stands, so that would be...
Once the commission approves, we are already on the build cycle. We're scheduled for March, and they'll take five weeks to construct.
Are we going to sell any of the other ones we got, or just...
Yes, once, once we get those on site, we will, which will be our older trolleys that we're having more mechanical issues out of.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with no further questions or comments, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay, item G, and we're going to have discussion on GH and I all at the same time, but we'll take them each one at a time. Item G, discussion and consideration of approving a contract with Blaylocks &amp; Sons for site work related to the Minnet Park baseball/softball field project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Cindy, do you want to discuss GH and I, please?
Yes, sir. And I will ask Greg Patterson to aid in this. So we did receive bids for the site work. Blaylocks was the low bidder, and the cost was negotiated, I think it came in at a little over $800,000, and it was negotiated down to $787. So that is, that, that basically is what that item is, okay? The item H and I are contracts with, well, H is a contract with AstroTurf Corporation for the turf, for the field. I is a contract with Musco Sports Lighting for the lighting of the field. And both of these are, do not have to be bid because we can do this through a cooperative perching agreement that is part of what the state approves called Sourcewell. And so that, those items are how much each, Robert? How much is H?
Well, the AstroTurf is $487,49. And the lighting, the Musco Lighting is $104,977, and those are both on pre-contract that's in access.
And the project was approved in this year's budget. That more than covers this fund.
Yeah, we have one point up there.
Yes, sir.
At some point, I would like to make a comment regarding those three projects.
Okay. You're more than welcome to. You can do it right now if you want to.
Yeah, it's fine. My name is George O'Malley, and I'm a registered professional engineer, and I live in Minnet Park. And I'm trying to understand the thinking that the board, I'm pretty impressed with the organization and operation of Gatlinburg as a whole, but the project that was bid a couple of years ago to take a beautiful little park and convert it to ADA compliant, was supposed to take a year and ended up taking two years. And there was a perfectly good ball diamond there at Minnet Park before they did the ADA compliant. So you ripped out the ballpark, you put in all the ADA compliant concrete, et cetera, et cetera, and now, I understand, there's a contract to rip out the ADA compliant cement and put in another ballpark. Now, I could be wrong, but that's what I'm hearing, and I'm seeing these items on the agenda and assuming that we've ripped out a park, we've put in pavement, and now we're going to rip out the pavement and put in another park. Is that correct, or am I, what's the logic behind this? I don't understand.
I can give you my take on it and the logic. If you were familiar with that baseball field for years...
Yes, I've been coming here for over 40 years.
There was a lot of time that it was just unplayable. It was a mud hole. This is going to be AstroTurf, and it's going to be someplace where the kids in this community can learn to play baseball. T-ball, softball, baseball, junior league, there's no other diamonds that they can play baseball right now in Gatlinburg. And we're missing a good opportunity for kids that love to play baseball, they don't have a place to play. So it was a swell of the people in the community that had spoke up and say, "We don't have any place where the kids can play baseball." If, if it's a good baseball player, they end up going to Pigeon Forge or Sevierville, and we want to keep them here in Gatlinburg, and so it's a great opportunity for that.
Well, I understand that argument, and it would seem like there could be merit to that, but why would you rip out a perfectly good or quasi-good park and not just improve that versus ripping it totally out, putting in pavement structures, and then ripping those out, and then now we're going to put another, a better park back in? And I, I see that, but in, in the last 43 years that I've been coming here, I can count on one, one hand the number of times I've seen people using the ballpark, the old ballpark that got ripped out. That, you know, I understand people want quality stuff, but as a taxpayer, it makes you wonder, if taxpayers are building one thing, and then we rip it out within two years and put something else that was already there, it just flies in the face of logic to me as an engineer. Secondly, an aside, I don't know the financing on this whole thing, but if the properties, the work that was done down there was done via a grant, there's a lot of grant stipulations that restrict building something via grant, US taxpayer grant, and then ripping it out with a short order. There's, there's a timeline on it, basically. So I don't know who the legal folks here that keep track of all that stuff, but you better tread lightly, make sure all your Ts and Is are dotted and Ts are crossed before you get into trouble in that, in that regard, but...
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for time.
Is, are we tearing out the walkway to put the field, not the concrete?
Not the concrete, it's the asphalt part.
Yeah, the concrete, we're all ripping out.
Lawrence, do you want to...
Yeah, can I, can I...
Yeah, please.
Asphalt, concrete, Portland cement, concrete. They're both concrete. One of them used the tuminous binders, the other one used cement. Portland cement is the binder. They're both concrete. They both cost a lot of money.
Thank you for your concern. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
I'd like to address a couple of items. One, the ball field has been built based on a master plan we conducted last year, and the citizens of Gatlinburg, one of the needs they wanted is for us to address youth sports within the department. So we're addressing that. We're very pleased that we have a youth baseball team again. Like you said, Mr. Mayor, nowhere to play, so that was neat. The asphalt park is, paving is always being removed, and to your point, your very good point about we're replacing every foot of the asphalt path being removed with better path, we're building concrete paths, so we're not going to be removing any linear foot. In fact, we're adding about another 100 feet of additional path as the replacement of the path that you're seeing going to be torn out. It's going to circumvent the ball field, and then it's going to go down along from the new memorial alongside the creek. So what we're going to be creating is a better situation. We're not, we don't want to remove any of the walking path. The asphalt was done as a temporary side as part of the grant. We were struggling to fulfill some of the needs, so that was always put there as a temporary need. I think the, you know, we're fulfilling, as again, we're fulfilling the, what was called for in our master plan, and we're going to add back to make it even better.
Not to mention...
Is this approval line item on the, it says discussion and consideration for site work, is that to mean that the site work has not already begun? Because they've already ripped out a lot of the sidewalk, and they've torn down old trees, cypress trees and other trees on the site. And is this line item to approve the site work which has already begun, or is that something else that I don't understand?
And when you put in AstroTurf, there's a lot of drainage issues, and my kids have played on that field. The old field was there, and there were so many times it was nothing but a mud hole.
A mud pit.
And when the site preparation work, a lot of it's going to be drainage to make sure that that's dry, and it's, and it's not going to have the same issues as in the past.
I don't argue that. My point is, is the board approving the site work which has already begun after the fact, or is this separate work that I don't know about?
Separate work that I don't think you know about. Separate work that I don't think you know about.
So the site work that's ongoing as we speak is, was in the line item that was approved previously under a different board, or a different board setting.
I don't know what the site work has begun already. There should be no site work at Minot, you know.
They've been down there tearing down trees and ripping up pavement.
I don't know any trees that have been torn down.
Sure that's not the other side?
I have videos of it.
I don't question that. I'm just asking, are you sure it's...
I'm assuming it's, it's in Minot Park. It's part of Minot Park, so the construction started today. I have videos of it if you'd like to see it, but it's immaterial. They ripped down a bunch of trees and ripped up a bunch of pavement today, today. Just started today.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I'm not to mention, too, that the GP softball team has got another place that's gonna serve, right? That's the other, it's kind of multi-use. We were able to do that as well. So it really is not just the Little League, it's the GP softball team as well.
That's regulation basketball.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Any other questions, comments? With none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item I, discussion and consideration of approving a contract with AstroTurf Corporation related to the Minot Park softball, baseball, softball field project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, and we've already had discussion. Any other comments or questions? With none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item I, discussion and consideration of approving a contract with Musco Sports Lighting LLC related to the Minot Park baseball/softball field project. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? With none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item J, resolution number 1010, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Public Entity Partners Property Conservation Managing Grant Program. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion in a second. Cindy, can we have a little discussion on this, please?
Yes, sir. This is, this is also a, I think, somewhat longstanding grant opportunity. We anticipate receiving $5,000 to be used for security cameras, cameras, excuse me, cybersecurity and such as that. So this is the resolution that allows us to officially make the application to receive the money.
Very good. Thank you, Cindy. Any other questions or comments? With none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Discussion and consideration of making appointments with the Board of Appeals. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the nomination of the ones that are retiring. I think they've decided, said that they'd like to, Dave Ogil, Gary Schultz, and Dave Haddon. I'd like to reappoint them.
Okay. Do we have a second for their nominations?
A second.
Okay. Any other nominations? With none other, all in favor of those three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item eight, unscheduled items. We'll start with Commissioner Hornet.
I don't really have any, but I do wanna make a comment about the DECA or the Beta Kids. That's, I mean, at such a young age, that's just something great that they can be proud of for all their lives, and then their parents, I know, would be extremely proud of them. And I think that's just great.
Awesome. Commissioner Smith. Chad, good job, buddy. Thank you for the, that was a lot of work, not, not saying, yet that, that's awesome.
Great to have it for, for the town.
Yeah, thank you, man, for the effort. Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Reagan.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to do that. I heard on the radio this morning on the USA Today thing, and it, it's good, us coming in first. I mean, Ashwell was 10. There's people in Vermont, New Mexico. It was across the country, and it was, it's an honor to be on the top of that list, so good job on that, for sure.
It's a real team effort.
Yeah.
Very good. Vice Mayor McCown. I have nothing, sir. I've got a couple things. One, I'd like to wish Larry Henderson a happy birthday. Let's give him a hand.
He looks good. You look, you look good at 85.
You're getting around great, man. And another really exciting thing that happened last week at the Governor's Conference of Tourism in Knoxville, Jackie Leatherwood was honored, and our very own Commissioner Kirby Smith was granted the Restaurant Tier of the Year Award, which was one of the big awards of the night. So, very good. And that's all I have. Do I...
One other thing, I noticed in information in our packet, Ronnie, that your, the public schools are changing their DARE programs to LEEDs programs. Can you explain that a little bit, please?
Well, it's, it's the law enforcement against drugs and violence. It's, it's similar. They're just moving away from the DARE program and moving to a new type of program. That's the school system, kind of made that change, and, and all the law enforcement agencies are falling in line.
I got you. Okay, very good. Thanks, Jim. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.